Thank you. We are live, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. We have all members of council present. Does anyone have a disclosure pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none? Motion for the minutes?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, loop by Council Row, second by Council Wynd, that the minutes of the rectory meeting of council dated Monday, April the 12th, 2021 be adopted?
Any questions? If not, call the vote, please. Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Crevets? Council Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Wynd?
Yes.
Council Wynd?
Yes.
Council Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries. Thank you. And we want to welcome tonight Darren Higgin and Ben Miller. They are our delegation to speak about the wind sensor installation in Houghes Park. So I don't know who's speaking first, but the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Martin and Council. My name's Darren Higgin. I'm Port Stanley resident and I'm a pilot with the Orange Air Ambulance. And I'm a part of a group of water sports enthusiasts that are seeking permission from this council to allow the installation of a weather station on the Port Stanley waterfront. This would be in cooperation with the service provider, Weatherflow. And Ben Miller's here with us from them. I know this topic may sound familiar to you, Mayor Martin and Council. In the spring of 2019, one of our group members, Mr. Bob Lopez, he works for Malhein actually, informally reached out to the municipality about a request and was eventually directed to Mr. Perrin. Mr. Perrin was connected eventually with Ben Miller of Weatherflow and they discussed some of the logistics of this. And Mr. Perrin then informed Mr. Miller that he would consider the proposal. Then later that summer, we learned by the newspaper that during the July 22nd council meeting, Mr. Perrin brought our proposal to this council with his recommendation to deny. Unfortunately for us, at the time, this was done without our knowledge. So we were unable to advocate for the proposal in person, answer any questions or to correct any erroneous information. So what are we proposing? All we are seeking is permission to allow a sensor station to be attached at a suitable location on the waterfront. Weatherflow installs and maintains the station. There is some flexibility in the final position, but a clear fetch is an important consideration for accurate readings. We believe an ideal location would be one of the Port Stanley lighthouses. On the east lighthouse, the setup would be nearly identical to that used at Frenchman's Bay in Pickering. If you'll allow me to share my screen here. See if I can get this. There with me, oops. If you can see here at the top left, there's a small solar panel. There's a control box that you can't quite see here and a pole with an anemometer and a temperature gauge on it. It's just strapped to the side. It's not a complicated installation, you know, not damaging in any way. So continue with that. The location on the east lighthouse would be safe from any vandalism concerns and wouldn't impact the main pier. Second good choice would also be the west lighthouse. It's obviously an excellent location. It would be simpler to access because we would need a boat. But again, Weatherflow would arrange that. We understand that concern was raised by Mr. Perrin due to the heritage designation and understand it may be an option. Although, you know, strapping a sensor to the railing doesn't appear to be problematic from our point of view at first glance. That's something that could be discussed. Alternatively, alternatively, one of the existing light standards could also be used as a as an installation location, similar to the pole here with the camera on it. And if I can show you an example here, here's a light standard at another location where there's the control box and solar panel and then the anemometer up top. And I think that's a lightning protection there, but something along that lines. So Weatherflow would arrange access for installation and maintenance. It's important to note that these are high-quality weather stations designed to thrive in harsh conditions. They're entirely self-contained, quite robust. They've proven tolerant of being encased in ice from freezing spray and resuming reporting once the ice thaws. I know that was a concern that was mentioned in the newspaper article that we read from 2019. So the next question is why? Like, why do we need this? Simply, available forecasts are inaccurate and there is no nearby real-time or onsite data. Environment Canada and other forecasts are very granular. That means that the forecast blocks that they use for predicting wind, temperature and everything like that are very large, many kilometers in size. Local topography also has a large impact. The Port Stanley is effectively in a large cove at the top of the lake, surrounded by high ground. These factors, along with the fact that the sensors currently used to generate the public forecast are few and far between, tens of kilometers from here, leaves us with forecasts that are often wildly inaccurate. Permitting the installation of the station will, as the forecast modeling learns, improve local forecasting and also allow access to real-time weather reporting. So who would benefit from this? To start, the data is freely provided to Environment and Climate Change Canada, improving their forecasts for all of us. Environment and Climate Change Canada, they changed the name from Environment Canada, has submitted a letter of endorsement for this proposal, which I believe has been forwarded, but I can bring it up here. It's a pretty long letter, so I'm not going to go through the whole thing. But it just reiterates the fact that there aren't any sensors anywhere near Port Stanley and they would love to get their hands on it and have this data. And they are fully in support of in support of having Weatherflow install this because these are calibrated sensors and they can trust the data from other local user groups such as recreational boaters, fishermen, kayakers, and along with the recreational beachgoers could also benefit from the station. The Port Stanley Beach Patrol, along with the Marine Rescue Unit, may find the real-time information and improved forecast useful as well. Weatherflow has agreed they would provide an account for the municipality to use free of charge. The board of the Port Stanley Sailing Squadron met and is also in support of this proposal and have submitted their letter of endorsement. If I can share again, one more here. This is a letter from the Port Stanley Sailing Squadron saying that this is something that they would find useful to improve their improve the safety of what they do by having real-time information, improving forecasts for them for planning purposes. Sorry. So these stations are utilized by numerous sailing clubs and are very popular. Nearby, there are stations hosted at Rondo Bay, Bell River, Mitchell's Bay and Turkey Point. There are 25 stations in Canada and there are 500 throughout North America. So there's a quick station map. You can see them scattered around the Great Lakes here, up through the St. Lawrence and all along the coastal areas of North America. They are installed successfully in so many locations because they've proven very useful to the waterfront users. So in summary, all we are seeking from you, Madam Mayor and Council, is permission to attach the sensor the sensor package somewhere agreeable. The installations are fairly simple. And what we would get is improved forecasts for safer decision-making. There's no cost to the municipality, nor is there a cost to anyone not interested in accessing the enhanced real-time information the station would provide. Thank you. This concludes my comments. And I'd like to thank you, Mayor Martin and Council members for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And Mr. Ben Miller is here from Weatherflow as well to answer any questions you might have directly for him.
Thank you. Mr. Shipway wished to speak here first, so.
Yeah, obviously, before council speaks, I'd just like to make one minor correction if I could, just as council considers that. The report from Mr. Perrin in 2019 was actually a recommendation to receive for information and that council provide direction. So on these matters, I think it's just important to review that it's council that makes the decision, not staff. And I just wanted to clarify that because Mr. Perrin did not make a recommendation against it. It was ultimately council that provided that direction. So I just wanted to add that point of clarity.
Thank you. I was actually going to note that too.
Yeah, thank you. And I apologize. All we had to go by was the newspaper article from the Elmer Express and it read that way. So that's all we knew. So I apologize.
Okay, if in the past, if you ever come across something like that, if you go into our website and go to the agenda for that meeting that you saw the newspaper article on, you would see the exact report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Martin.
So that you could actually read what was said. Okay, questions from council? Any questions? Fiona, go ahead.
Um, now I was, I guess, you staff. I know we have issue with equipment on our water tower. The equipment we have up there and how it may affect it. But that wouldn't be a consideration with this equipment down at the berm?
Your parent?
Through you, Madam Mayor. No, I do not believe so. I guess there are a few questions though. As I understand it, this is a private company, private service for profit, I'm assuming, while Transport Canada or Environment Canada utilizes this information. My understanding of Weatherflow is it is a subscription service where people pay to be able to access the information. And if so, if council was to consider entertaining this proposal, then we would suggest that there should be some type of agreement between the municipality and Weatherflow to allow the equipment to be there and possibly a fee attached to it since it is private enterprise.
I could speak first to the question, the question of any concerns with the instrumentation, any data transmission and so forth. You could pretty much compare it to the equivalent of someone standing there and sending a text message every five minutes. So, so the, as far as any concerns for any, there would be no real interference concerns or anything like that. And the station is itself like Mr. Higgin brought out self-contained. So there's, there's no, it doesn't connect to any, you know, shore power or any transmission lines or anything like that. It would simply be mounted to the side of a structure.
Was Mr. Perrin correct, Mr. Miller, in that this is a, you do charge people to use this? Other than that, you said you're going to provide Environment Canada with the information for free?
Yes. So, so Environment Canada benefits from any existing Weatherflow data. So they, that's, you know, adds no cost to Environment Canada or the federal government or provincial government. That, that is, certainly they appreciate that. The individual users can access the data for a subscription. That is correct. After all, we fully fund the weather station, so we have to fix, we have to get the expenses covered somehow eventually, hopefully, right? But, but yes, the that is the arrangement that in order to cover our costs ultimately.
So Madam Mayor, if I may add some information. So the data goes to Environment Canada freely to improve forecasting. And then there are people like myself and many waterfront users, like the Sailing Squadron and stuff like that, who use some of Weatherflow's web portals to access this data for the real-time information. What's, what is it actually doing right now? And it's, you know, annual subscription service for the people that want it. And I'm a person that would want it because, you know, I frequent a lot of these places where these stations are installed and they're very useful. And that's why there are so many of these stations around because the model supports, you know, with the subscription supports having them there for the people who want that information.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Miller. And then I know Mr. Fair, Council Fair and Council, or sorry, Deputy Mayor Marks, both wish to ask questions. Go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to add to Mr. Higgin's comments that we have worked with many local entities in the past, including within Ontario. Working with township of South Bruce Peninsula, with the city of Collingwood, with the city of Pickering and with the I think it's called the Township of Lake Shore where Bell River is. And so there's, so we've worked with a number of entities and there's probably more that I'm just not thinking of off the top of my head. But we have worked with many municipalities in the past.
Thank you. Mr. Council Fair, you're next. And then Deputy Mayor Marks.
The only thing I was, I was going to say is I'm a boater and I, the one that I use is the Port Stanley buoy, which seems to be giving fairly accurate information. So I'm just wondering with all these overlaps, because when I, when I look that up, I get pretty good information there.
Yeah, Mr. Miller, I could answer that. I can answer that. I talked about the local topography and stuff. One of the things that happens here, Mr. Counselor Fair, is that we get a phenomenon called doming. The high ground in the cove lets the cold air pile up against the shore. So what's happening 18 kilometers offshore with the buoy? And what's happening in Port Stanley, along the bluffs and along the shoreline is often vastly different. And that's one of the reasons why this would be a very desirable spot to have one. And the modeling and the forecasting for this local pocket would improve over time as the modeling learned.
I would also add, Councilman, that that was one point that Environment and Climate Change Canada pointed out as well, the distance from shore, about 18 kilometers. Another thing that I would note is the temporal resolution of the data from that buoy is about once per hour. Whereas the proposed weather station would be every five minutes. So that's, you know, 12 times higher temporal resolution.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Marks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess my question is, you have many of these devices in different places around. Do you pay rent for any of those places?
So I'll be candid, we prefer not to because after all, it's 100% loss for us until sometime in the future when we perhaps have recouped our expenses. However, we have paid a small lease on a handful of occasions. Yes.
All right, because that's, you know, we're representing our ratepayers. And, you know, that's an asset that we're giving you access to. And I would, I no doubt you're offering a good service, but I'm thinking, you know, representing our taxpayers, if someone taps you on the shoulder, why are you giving it away free when you could get something for it? So that's why I asked the question.
I understand. And, you know, I would, we would certainly be willing to discuss proposed lease fee, although of course our goal would be to have none. But, but I understand your point exactly.
Thank you. Council Row wished to ask a question?
Thank you. No, maybe more of a comment, but I was just going to go back to what Counselor Wynd had asked at the beginning. And I know we talked about the internet provider that wanted the access to the top of the water tower. Two totally different issues and areas perhaps, but I think we just as a council need to be consistent as to sort of what our policy is as far as these things go. Because if they are sort of for-profit enterprises, we should be cognizant of that. I do though believe that putting something on the water tower is far more, it would need to be done with far more care than something like this wind sensor that if it was on the east pier lighthouse would probably be almost invisible to most people or on one of the lamp posts. I would probably would not put it on the west pier or west lighthouse. So I see the need. I think it's probably important for the sailors. I was trying to look back and recall why I had voted it down in the first place. I really do not know. So I will apologize for that, but I think it was just more of sort of fear of the unknown and what are we allowing on some of our structures around the village?
Council Wynd?
Agreed. I guess I was asking originally with regards to the water tower, just because I knew our reason for not agreeing to that was that that equipment could interfere with our own. I'm not as concerned at the moment with this equipment. And in some ways, I feel it's one of those things that no cost to us that is give back to our ratepayers at no cost to them. So I would see it in that light as long as agreement. And I'm sorry, I know that you would prefer to not have a fee, but I think there should be something in place for the use of it. Otherwise, it just means everybody wants to come and have something attached somewhere. Fee structures with that keep those things under control, I would think. So, but otherwise, I don't really see or hear any reason why we wouldn't at least speak further with regards to this or speak to our staff further with regards to it.
Thank you. Council Crevets?
Question, what would the cost for a individual or a state of the Port Stanley Squadron to become a member of Weatherflow? What is the year of the subscription?
So the cost for a yearly subscription to access all, and it's not, it wouldn't just be the data from one location. That's an important point. It would be the data from the whole network. So all of, all the other sites in Ontario and, you know, the whole, all of North America. And that would, that cost is $10 US per month or $120 per year.
Okay, the reason I'm asking that is you did offer a subscription to the municipal house. I don't know if that, the information, and maybe that the information may be a benefit to our municipality with our marine rescue unit. Item being located in Port Stanley. Sorry, my internet connection is a bit unstable. I'm gonna shut my video off. Yes, so the merit to having this for our municipality, there may be some merit in our marine rescue. And so that is one reason I would see that. I wouldn't be that opposed to having it on the one lighthouse. Not the historical lighthouse, but the marker lighthouse. That would be the ideal location in its own site. And I think there may be some benefit to it, having different service clubs in the area that would have access to it, such as the Canadu Yacht Club, the Port Stanley Sailing Squadron, just a few local users. That's my thought anyways. Thank you.
Just one question I would have, when, like, if the Sailing Squadron subscribed, then any member of the Sailing Squadron can use that, say, one at a time or how does that work? I'm thinking some of the marinas might want to subscribe. That was my concern.
So people usually subscribe as an individual?
Right.
But there, there could be group arrangements as well.
Okay, that, I was just curious about that. So any other questions for both Mr. Higgin and Mr. Miller? Deputy Mayor Marks?
Again, I can see the benefit. But again, sticking up for our ratepayers, I think we should, you know, discuss some benefit financially to the municipality.
Sounds to me as if council are pretty much in agreement with that, that, and I think the majority of council are saying the east lighthouse, the one, not the historic lighthouse it's designated, but the east lighthouse would be the ideal spot. It is away from vandalism, which I do think is, we've had problems with vandalism on the pier. And I think we don't want to encourage any more of that. That's why the camera is there. So I think that sounds like that that's council's feeling, but that there should be some reimbursement to the municipality for that. Mr. Shipway?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If it's the will of council, you could refer this back to staff. Staff could speak with Mr. Higgin and Mr. Miller and also touch base with the town of Collingwood and the town of Lake Shore and come back with an agreement to basically operationalize what council has directed here on the east lighthouse, considering some form of remuneration and the standard agreement clauses for insurance and indemnification, those sort of things, if that is the will of council.
Counselor, speak up if that is not your will then. That was my, I was going to suggest that staff be directed to deal with Mr. Higgin and Mr. Miller and come up with the correct lease agreement. Counselor Fair, you wish to speak?
I was just going to say, I'm past commander of the Canadian Power and Sales Squadron. And we do have GPSs, we do have navigation systems, we have all kinds of things. I don't, I haven't heard of many people availing themselves of this system. So, you know, from the membership that I've dealt with over the last 10 or 12 years, I would question how many people would actually sign up. That's all.
Well, that's up to them as far as the losses go, if they don't get enough people signing up. Is it, is it my understanding then, as I said, that we're willing to have staff meet with Mr. Higgin and Mr. Miller and try to come up with something to bring back to council?
Yes.
Okay, with that, that's just staff direction? Or do we need a?
I do have a draft motion.
You have a draft motion? Go ahead.
The draft motion, Madam Mayor, before I get a mover in a second, you're on it. The draft motion reads that council appreciates the delegation by Darren Higgin and Ben Miller of Weatherflow, respecting the installation of a private wind sensor on municipal land slash property in Port Stanley and that council requests further information on such items as insurance and the provision of an agreement. And further, that council directs staff to bring forward a report to outline the above noted information for council's consideration prior to any approval.
Would someone like to make move that?
Happy to move it.
Okay, I've got lots of movers. Deputy Mayor Marks and Counselor Wynd? Would you call the vote, please?
Council Cook? Council Crevets?
Yes.
Council Fair?
No.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Council Wynd?
Yes.
Council Row? Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Resolution carries. So gentlemen, you can be in touch with Mr. Perrin and try to work things out.
Thank you, Mayor Martin and Council. It was a pleasure. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we have no correspondence for action. We have correspondence for information. Are there ones that you wish to discuss or bring out or have anything to say? I have one. Go ahead, Council Crevets.
Item number one, the Schedule III of Bill 257, I believe that's one that we should endorse. Because what that in essence does, it takes the power for firmly, et cetera, directly to the provincial government and bypasses the municipality. So I think we should try to keep control of that. And with our new official plan amendments, I think that's something that we should be doing. And I think we should definitely endorse that motion.
That was the one that I was going to speak to, to Council Crevets. And I agree with you because it, the minister, it's a minister zoning order can override even provincial planning principles, except in the green belt. So they have every right to override and they don't have to have any public input or local input. So I agree, I would like to see that one. I had told Diana ahead of time, so she already has a motion for that one. Is there any other one that you wish to speak to? Anyone? Deputy Mayor Marks?
We've got the two with concerning pushing the garbage, dragging the garbage up the hill on Prospect Street. I'm just curious if there's any, I know staff are working through various things. Is there any hope for these residents or, I'm just more curious. My back kind of hurts when I think about it, but.
Well, I will say, when I discussed it with one, Council, or Mr. Brooks said he wouldn't have any problem pushing it. he wouldn't have any problem pushing it up there. And I said, well, I certainly would. Because at my age, and I know the two people who wrote in are my age, or a little, one's a little older, one's a year or two younger. But it would be difficult for me to push it up that hill. But I, we have, Mr. Brooks, would you like to speak to your position at this point?
Through you, Mayor Martin. As council is aware, staff proposed the most economical plan for council's consideration. I believe it was approximately a month ago, we brought a level of service report forward and identified that the residents on Prospect Street would be required to move their carts up to the top of the hill on Prospect near Maple Street. That was endorsed by council. So the the fees for the carts have been based on this established level of service. This program is council's program. And if council wishes to increase the level of service, service staff could report back with the cost implications to do so.
Deputy Mayor Marks and then Counselor Rowe and then Counselor Wynn.
I I have to commend staff. I've had seven serious calls where people were very alarmed. So far, six of them are quite happy with the cooperation they've received received from staff. So that's why I was only asking for a bit of information where this was at. And certainly, again, commend staff. There's there's these little issues that come up. I I keep telling people, there's a solid business case for this move to the the new carts, and I I fully support it. But I do feel a little sorry for some of these ones. And if we can work something out for them, that's all. They've sent letters to council, and I just want to bring it up. I certainly don't have the answer, but we'll commend staff. I know they're working on these individual ones that still need to be figured out. Like you say, I've got six out of seven, so hopefully this one can be resolved as well.
Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Rowe.
Well, Counselor Krebitz brought it up at the last council meeting, and he was trying to get something more concrete, I guess, as to some alternatives. My question would be, do we know the size of carts that these people have ordered? And is there the possibility of at least doing some sort of, call it a demonstration and and doing like a real life activity? So that in advance of all of this change, we know whether or not at least it is physically possible for someone to do that to begin with, so that then we can come up with some other alternatives if if need be. But I am equally as concerned. It's different if you're on a a flat level, but if you're on a a bit of a hill, it it could be a bit of an issue.
Counselor Wynn.
All right, I was kind of heading the same place Counselor Rowe was. First of all, currently, like under this system, our trucks are going, are picking up in front of these homes?
It's a pickup truck that goes down and gathers all their stuff and takes it up to the big trucks at the top.
Okay, yes, that's that was it. Sorry, I I knew there was something else with it. It was different. Yeah, so I I guess that's just what I was thinking. I I know with these bins, I I think I had said I was able to use one this summer. Again, there was a bit of a slope where I had it, it's certainly not Prospect Street, but those bins I found to be very, very maneuverable. That's just what I was wondering, if there was some way to pass on Prospect before we get there, just to see how maneuverable it is to get it up that street. So if that's a possibility or not.
Mr. Brooks, do you want to respond to that before I go to Mr. Counselor Krebitz?
If if council would like to direct staff to have a a session out on Prospect to push the the carts up and down the hill, we'd be happy to do so if that's council's direction.
Thank you. Counselor Krebitz.
Okay, I'm just gonna shut my video. I have a poor internet connection. During the week, Mr. Brooks and I did have a chance to talk about this location. What we've done in the past historically, sending the truck down there is something that was not done for other residents of the municipality, people who had long lane lanes. We don't send the truck up the long laneway to pick up their garbage. So it was it was this extra service that was being provided to this area. And this area is also a private road, I believe. It's not a municipal road. So there's what we'll have to do in the future going forward. I think we'll have to look at some sort of program that would allow residents with an accessibility problem, et cetera, to apply. And we'll have to try to get some other program in place to allow people with with difficult situations to apply for this. It's it's something that it's a growing pain that we're going to have to deal with. So in the meantime, I don't know the answer to the Prospect Street. We discussed a few things, but we couldn't put a dumpster at the top, allow everybody on Prospect Street to access because the fear would other people would be accessing that garbage bin as well. And who would want that garbage bin, the collection area in front of their own house? So I I think it's something we 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 more discussion has to be discussed about this. But at this time, I don't have the answer, but there is something that will have to be done in such locations.
Sir Wynn.
Yeah, and and that was my concern was more from an accessibility standpoint, like there would, those that would have that issue. And that's not going to be everybody on Prospect Street. But but for those that would have an accessibility issue, that's where I and I see the problem, again, after Mr. Brooks saying it out loud about having staff on Prospect Street taking bins up and down the street. I don't know that that's necessary, Mr. Brooks, and and really not where I how I want staff to use their time. But I also feel the same way that there is a solution for this. We just haven't found it yet.
Thank you. I I am aware I've been called by four of the people on Prospect Street over that time, and three of whom are, like, one's 91 years of age, and he doesn't feel he can do it. And I know both the others, for health reasons, felt they couldn't do it. So it is a concern. And I it, you know, I mean, I've driven down that road many times. I don't even like driving on that road. It's so narrow. I'm so afraid I'm going to meet someone walking or anything because it's round curves. And I'm just concerned about the safety of wheeling a bin up that very narrow road and going around a curve and up a hill as well for anyone, let alone people who are struggling. So I don't know what the answer is. Mr. Brooks, do you want to talk to these people specifically or have you? Or do you want to just leave it? Mr. Shipway is going to wants to speak, so I'll let him speak first.
See you, Madam Mayor. I'll just jump in in advance of Mr. Brooks here. I think one thing, as of right now, staff have carried out the direction of council on the rollout of the program. So if council would like something different, staff seek direction on what that different approach is. And I think the one other item to be cognizant of is that prior to this, the garbage program was funded by the tax levy, so it was within the general levy. What council has done by transitioning the cart program to a user fee is in theory makes each individual property responsible for their waste. So it's a user fee, not a general fee. So if property A uses a very small cart, they will be charged less than a property that uses the large cart. So if you're going to add a specific added level of service for an area, council just has to be cognizant in how that's funding it now that you've transitioned it to a user fee. And and I would just add one other component that's not directly related to the garbage cart program is in 2003, Central Ogden is tentatively slated for transition of the recycling program over to RIPRA, so the producers of of recycling. And that would mean the municipality will not have control over the recycling program. So it just, in setting levels of service, there's a there's a real possibility that you could set a higher level of service with your garbage cart program than which the private sector is going to deliver for the recycling recycling program in the future. So just some food for thought. I know that ICS staff are more than happy to investigate any options you may have, but we will need direction on on what you would like us to do with the added levels of service and accessibility accommodation programs, all those sort of things.
Just one comment. I'm sure Mr. Shipway meant 2023, not 2003.
Thank you very much, yes.
Any comments? Go ahead, Counselor Fair.
I I was just listening to Mr. Shipway. The way we sold this program was we always said it was the fee for garbage was a certain amount that was put in with your tax bill. And part of the way we sold it was saying you were paying for it before. Now you're still paying for it, but it's showing as a separate line item on your bill, and it's less than you were paying before. So, you know, we we have to be careful because that's that's how we sold it in the first place. We said exactly that, you're paying a fee right now, but it's built into your tax bill. And now we're just breaking it out. So we have to be careful on that.
And I think Mr. Shipway also means that these people, if they were getting extra service beyond, that it may be an extra charge for them, not for the for everybody, if we were doing something different there. Counselor Rowe.
Yes, I was going to suggest perhaps that, if that's the direction that they wanted. But what I would suggest is let the carts be delivered as of May 6, as I think Mr. Brooks has in his work plan. Once the carts are actually at the homes, I would be more than willing to just go down and and talk to some of the the owners, put some, you know, sample garbage, whatever, in the containers. And just, you know, try it, see what happens, see what size of carts that they have, just that we know what we're working with, and then we can come up with a possible alternative if it is absolutely necessary, based on some of those experiences. So that's just my take.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Just want to thank everyone. Mayor Martin, just like you, I've had many phone calls from people on that street. So we we've done as they've asked, had a good discussion on it, so I'm confident we'll work it out.
Thank you. So I I guess Mr. Brooks said, I'm assuming the rest of council agree with Counselor Rowe's suggestion, we let the carts be delivered, and that maybe she, as their councillor for that ward, can go and do it. I don't mind doing it too, only I'll tell you, I won't be wheeling it up anywhere because it's hard enough for me to walk up that hill. That's my age that is showing. Okay, is that sufficient for that one? So we're not going to specifically do anything about that one. Is there any other one we want taken out before we take these all together? If not, we're just taking out number one?
Right.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Wynn.
I wanted one taken out, and sorry, I can't see my screen now with. I believe it was number six. Just have a question with regards to it. Is that the one on the noxious weeds, number six?
Yes, it is.
Have we, I I guess all I'm asking is, have we always sent this letter out this time of year? Or is this rush time?
No, we do it every year.
Oh, we do. Okay, for for some reason, it looked brand new to me, but I just love that this goes out, I'm not always paid attention to, I guess, but I'm just happy in knowing that this notice is being received by residents. So, thank you.
Madam Mayor, on that note, to also win and the rest of council, it gets published in the local papers as well as our website, too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, would you, do you, you want to do the taking them all together, except for number one?
My understanding is that it's excluding item number one. The motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Fair, that correspondence items number one through number nine, excluding number one, be received as information and filed.
Call the vote.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz.
Yes.
Counselor Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Wynn.
Yes.
Counselor Rowe.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries. Madam Mayor, I have a mover on item number one being Counselor Krebitz.
We need a sec. Our Counselor Wynn is seconding.
The motion reads, moved by Counselor Krebitz, seconded by Counselor Wynn, correspondence received from the town of Orangeville and the township of Essau, requesting the Minister of Infrastructure and the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing to withdraw Schedule III from Bill 257, be endorsed.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz.
Yes.
Counselor Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Wynn.
Yes.
Counselor Rowe.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. We're now at the Central Ogden Planning Office apart, and we're looking at CPE 1321. This is the to amend the Village of Port Stanley bylaw on West Edith Cavell. Do we have, you've probably, you've, I assume you have all read the report. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. McClure? Seeing none, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Krebitz, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that report CEP 1321 be received as information, and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the zoning bylaw in support of the proposed residential use on lands located at 507 West Edith Cavell Boulevard, which may be legally described as Plan 160, part of lots six and seven, and part of Lake Beach Registered Plan 11R7174, Part 1, 2, 3, and 4, geographic Village of Port Stanley, now municipality of Central Ogden. And further, a date for a public meeting be scheduled for Tuesday, May the 25th, 2021, in accordance with Ontario Regulation 54506, as amended.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz.
Yes.
Counselor Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Wynn.
Yes.
Counselor Rowe.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Now we're looking at the application for consent. Margaret Berry at 377 Warren Street. Any questions? There are two items. Actually, we've got two reports on this one. First one is just fairly straightforward. Any questions? If not, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Wynn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report CEP 1421 be received as information, and that council has no objections to consent application E1421, Margaret Berry, 377 Warren Street, subject to the following recommended conditions: Approval of a zoning bylaw amendment to permit a townhouse development on the severed lot and to bring the existing house and accessory building on the retained lot into conformity with the Village of Port Stanley zoning bylaw number 1507, as amended. The applicants enter into an agreement with the municipality of Central Ogden to address administrative, technical, and financial matters relative to the development of the subject lands. The payment of cash and the dedication of 5% of the land for parkland purposes, a copy of the reference Plan B provided to the municipality of Central Ogden, and a drainage reassessment be done if necessary at the owner's expense.
Would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz.
Yes.
Counselor Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Wynn. Counselor Rowe.
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Now, the other half, of course, of this is the actual Conex Canada, the plan of the townhouses in that area. Does anyone have any questions on that part? Yep, sorry, Counselor Krebitz and then Counselor Rowe.
The issue that I have with this location is the crosswalk that's built there right now, that laneway is going to eliminate the the crosswalk location. It seems that the lane comes directly out where the new crosswalk is. What's going to happen to that crosswalk location would be my concern. I don't see any plan on that. Does anybody have an answer to that?
What staff member would like to respond to that?
I can add, Mayor Martin.
Go ahead, Mr. Perrin, and then we'll go to you, Counselor Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That concern was raised by staff during the pre-consultation meeting, and it still needs to be addressed by the applicant.
So if it had to be moved, they would be So if it had to be moved, they would be paying for that? Is that, would that be our understanding?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Row.
Yes, thank you. I did read in one of the documents that was provided that they have actually agreed to have only the one roadway as an access. So that driveway, as it exists right now, that's close to the sidewalk would no, or the crosswalk would no longer exist, and the home and the fourteen townhouses would be coming out onto Warren further to the east of the crosswalk. That's what it says.
Okay, Mr. McClure.
Uh, and just one thing to note, I'd like to, uh, I guess, yeah, note as part of this process is that the, uh, should the zoning and the severance be approved, there would still be a planning condominium and site plan process that would be required to work out some of those details as well. Uh, right now, this was simply dealing with the the severance of the land and then rezoning to allow for the the townhouse use on on the property. Well, we, in with that, there would be setback requirements and that is kind of put in there too, based on the draft uh, plan, but the the more specific, the particulars with respect to the crosswalk location needing to be addressed and that that could be dealt with through the site plan process.
Thank you, councillor Row.
Yes, so my question was more around the record of site condition because of some of the issues that they had discovered along the way. So is it better to, which is more efficient and which is better, I guess? Putting a holding symbol on the rezoning or actually deferring the application until that record of site condition is presented back to staff? Do they ultimately have the same impact?
Mr. McClure.
Uh, through councillor Row, um, based on the what was found through the process, um, staff was is satisfied that you could put a holding provision on the the zoning to address uh, the level of contamination. It, to my understanding, it uh, has already been, uh, I guess remediated, but the the final report and analysis by uh, the 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 province needs to be undertaken. Um, had it been, I guess, a more contaminated site and the issues be, uh, I guess that were raised uh, were, uh, I guess greater, then we might have, uh, recommended deferral. But given the the level of contamination that was that found, that, uh, we feel that a holding provision would be sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Fair, seconded by councillor Kravitz, that report CEP sixteen twenty-one be received and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the zoning bylaw bylaw in support of the proposed residential use on lands located at three seventy-seven Warren Street, which may be legally described as Plan one seven, one hundred and seventeen, part lot forty-two, lots forty-four to forty-six, and Reference Plan eleven R two seven seven nine, part one, part two, geographic village of Port Stanley, now municipality of Central Algen. And further, that a date for a public meeting be scheduled for Tuesday, May the twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, in accordance with Ontario Regulation five four five four five oh six as amended.
Thank you. Call the vote.
Councillor Cook.
Yes.
Councillor Kravitz.
Yes.
Councillor Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Councillor Win. Councillor Row.
Yeah.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. We're now moving to the Chief Administrative Officers' Report on the Municipal Election Method of Vote. You've read the report. Any comments? Or questions? We went through this, I know at the time, now those of you who are new wouldn't, but, uh, we went through this every election as long as I've been on council, and we've always agreed to stay with the in-person voting with the tabulators because there's less chance of error. Any questions? If not, go ahead and read the motion, please.
Motion reads Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Fair, seconded by councillor Win, that the council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Algen receive report CO eighteen twenty-one, three twenty twenty-two municipal election method of vote information, and that council direct staff to use vote tabulators for the twenty twenty-two municipal election. And further, that staff be directed to bring forward a twenty twenty-two municipal election method of vote bylaw for council's consideration.
Would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Cook.
Yes.
Councillor Kravitz.
Yes.
Councillor Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Deputy, sorry, councillor Win.
She said.
Yes.
Yeah.
Councillor Row.
Yeah.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're to the Director of Asset Management and Development Services Reports. The first one is the Management Program. Um, Mr. Perrin has outlined that for us. Is there any comments or questions on that report? Seeing none, call the, or do the motion, please.
The motion reads Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Row, seconded by councillor Kravitz, that report AMDS fourteen twenty-one, re FCM Municipal Asset Management Program, MAMP, be received for information, and that the council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Algen direct staff to apply for a grant opportunity from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Municipal Asset Management Program for a Port Stanley Harbour detailed con condition audit. And that the council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Algen commits to conducting the following activities in its proposed project submitted to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Municipal Asset Management Program to advance our asset management program. Port Stanley Harbour detailed condition audit. And further that, the municipality of Central Algen commits ten thousand dollars from the harbour reserve toward the cost of this initiative.
Would you recall the vote, please?
Councillor Cook.
Yes.
Councillor Kravitz.
Yes.
Councillor Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Councillor Win. Councillor Row.
Yeah.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Okay, and now we're moving on to is, uh, the next report on the asset management preamble that is prepared for us, which I thought was extremely well-written and a good. That was my response, anyway. Does anyone else have any questions or comments on it? Seeing none, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Fair, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that the council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Algen receive report AMDS fifteen twenty-one Asset Management Plan preamble as information. And that council approved the Asset Management Plan preamble document, and further that staff be directed to publish the Asset Management Plan on the municipal public engagement website, letstalkcentralalgen.org, and the Central Algen website, centralalgen.org.
Vote, please.
Councillor Cook.
Yes.
Councillor Kravitz.
Yeah.
Councillor Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Councillor Win.
Yeah.
Councillor Row.
Yeah.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. Okay, the Asset Management Department Summer Staff, the hiring of two, uh, summer staff to help with the collection of data for the Asset Management Program. Any questions? Not? Would you read the motion, please?
The motion reads Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Win, seconded by councillor Kravitz, that the council of the Corporation of the Municipality of Central Algen receive report AMDS sixteen twenty-one Asset Management Department Summer Staff as information, and that council approved the hiring of two GIS students for the summer of twenty twenty-one to field collect asset data. And further that the cost of the two hirings be funded from the municipal modernization reserve fund.
Call the vote, please.
Councillor Cook.
Yes.
Councillor Kravitz.
Yes.
Councillor Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Councillor Win. Councillor Row.
Yeah.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Now, the Port Stanley Fire Hall Project Status Update. This was one that interested me because they're going now to a horizontal, um, in-ground heating, which is what I had put in last fall in my place. It was expensive at my place, but nowhere near what it is here. So I happened to call the installer that had done mine just to find out about the costs of something, and I find out he's the one who's actually been given, given the estimate, et cetera, and he explained it all to me very carefully about the length of pipes and the size, which are quite different from what I would have on a house. So, uh, do you have questions on this one? Councillor Fair.
I was just a little nervous, like, we're talking about four million, and we're talking now around two hundred and fifty thousand. That's a six percent change already, and we're only thirty-seven percent of. Uh, I know you can't guarantee what it'll be, but are there other anticipated changes that could come back and and haunt us? Because it's it's creeping up already, and like I say, we're only thirty-seven percent done.
Mr. Perrin, go ahead.
At this point, staff are trying to keep, uh, the project in check. Uh, as with all the projects, we're having issues with delivery of materials and, uh, material escalation that, uh, we're experiencing. Price of lumber is, uh, gone up exponentially since the price or contract was was let and tendered. At this point, there are some minor change orders that have been, uh, issued, uh, but we are trying to keep the project in check.
Do you anticipate any other major things? Like, this is a fairly major change.
This is major, uh, your worship. Uh, however, we don't anticipate anything, uh, major for the remainder of the contract.
Thank you. I know many people have been asking about the well drilling on the site, you know, and that why are we not using municipal water, which we are, of course, it was to try and do the, uh, the heating. Councillor Fair, you had something else you wish to say?
One other thing, I noticed that Mr. Perrin mentioned about the cost of lumber. Are we, uh, having a, I know some of the home builders that I've dealt with in London are saying that the lumber has doubled in the last eight months. Are we hitting that too? Because if that went up, because we are building a wooden structure.
Yeah, the, with respect to the building package, uh, we are not experiencing a, a, an increased cost on that, however. Uh, there are, uh, structural numbers or or, uh, dimensional lumber, rather, two-by-fours, two-by-sixes, sheeting that, uh, has not been, uh, secured yet or purchased. Uh, and those prices are are going up as well, and actually over two hundred percent from what was originally, uh, tendered.
But not the, not the actual constructions, like the the panels.
Not not the CLT and mass timber, because that price was secured earlier on, uh, through a purchase order.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Marks, then back to councillor Fair.
I just like, uh, quite often we get, uh, a project, we tender and we get a really, really good um, tender and a good result, and we feel pretty good, but, you know, sometimes it evens out. This project has been, I won't say, uh, just so many things have come up beyond, beyond anyone's control. Uh, I I have to appreciate the the effort staff have done to try and balance this, because this has been a challenging one. Uh, some of the things, you know, you could never have predicted, so I I have confidence in staff, and that's certainly appreciative. It's sometimes they're they're just bad luck karma, whatever you want to call it, but this project seems to have been marred by many difficulties and but then sometimes the next one just goes so good, you, you know, bounces out. So I'm hopeful and I I'm thankful for the efforts of staff.
Councillor Fair.
Uh, again, I I know Mr. Perrin alluded to lumber costs going up over two hundred percent. We're, we're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars on the, uh, uh, the geothermal, and with the lumber, two hundred percent, couldn't that be another two or three hundred thousand?
No, uh, the actual lumber, that the dimensional lumber and the sheeting is, uh, a relatively small component to the project because it is CLT and mass timber building. So we're not talking about, um, you know, the cost of a home where, you know, there's, you know, tens of thousands of dollars of of, uh, of dimensional lumber in that we're talking about strapping two-by-fours for interior walls. All the exterior walls are CLT panels uh, and mass timber beams and columns. So that's the majority of the lumber is already been secured through a purchase order and, uh, in the process of delivery.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Now, would you read the motion, please?
The motion reads Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by councillor Row, that report AMDS seventeen twenty-one, report Stanley Fire Station be received for information and that council direct the use of a closed horizontal geothermal system in the amount of two hundred nine thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars plus applicable taxes. And further that amounts associated with the closed horizontal loop, horizontal loop geothermal system beyond the project cash allowances and contingency, if any, be funded from the fire services reserve.
Thank you. Call the vote. Oh, I'm sorry, councillor Kravitz.
Thank you. Um, just to thank Mr. Perrin, with this, um, horizontal, with the horizontal loop that we're doing, um, Mr. Perrin was able to take advantage of the topography down there, and we're able to put the runs, they don't have to go as deep as they're required to. We're actually not the, the horizontal system through the full depth. We're actually bringing sand fill on top of it for a cost savings, so the the cost wouldn't have been more than two hundred thousand had this ingenious, the doing this being done. We were unable to get enough water from the well to heat the building, that's why we had to go with this system. So I am going to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kravitz. Would you call the vote then, please?
Councillor Cook. Councillor Cook. Councillor Kravitz. Councillor Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Councillor Win.
Yeah.
Councillor Row.
Yeah.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Thank you. We're now on to bylaws. Does anyone have any questions about the bylaws? Anyone you want taken separately? If not, I ask you to read the motion, take them together.
Yeah, and staff would note at this time, Madam Mayor, that, uh, bylaw twenty-five sixty-five is just the third reading, so it's just on the final motion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the motion reads move by councillor Fair, seconded by councillor Win, that bylaws twenty-five eighty-two, twenty-five eighty-six, and twenty-five eighty-seven be taken collectively.
Call the vote.
Councillor Cook. Councillor Kravitz.
Yeah.
Councillor Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Councillor Win. Councillor Row.
Yeah.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Next motion.
Next motion on the bylaws, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Kravitz, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that bylaws twenty-five eighty-two, twenty-five eighty-six, and twenty-five eighty-seven be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote.
Councillor Cook.
Yes.
Councillor Kravitz.
Yes.
Councillor Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Councillor Win.
Yeah.
Councillor Row.
Yeah.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Final motion on the bylaws, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Row, seconded by councillor Kravitz, that bylaws twenty-five sixty-five, twenty-five eighty-two, twenty-five eighty-six, and twenty-five eighty-seven be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote.
Councillor Cook.
Yes.
Councillor Kravitz. Councillor Fair.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Yes.
Councillor Win.
Yeah.
Councillor Row.
Yeah.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
That resolution carries.
Thank you. So we're now, we have no resolutions or public notice. Oh, you had something you did want to note. Is that a public notice?
Uh, Madam Mayor, under public notice, uh, on the agenda added is the Central Algen Official Plan Update Postcard, and it's just for informational purposes. Uh, that information is also live on Let's Talk.
Thank you. Some reason mine didn't update. Okay, and so we come to new business, and I do have a couple of items, and I, some of the rest of you may have one. I'd like to get, one is fairly simple, I'd like to get that out of the way quickly. That's the Rural Education Task Force that the county have appointed me to. Um, I meet with members of the Thames Valley Board, our our two representatives from Elgin County and others, uh, that are representing rural municipalities, rural areas such as Middlesex and Oxford are on this, plus we have, um, people representing teachers, people representing parents, et cetera. And we're looking at trying to preserve our rural schools, and that's what it's all about. And so we've done, we did a, um, oh, trying to remember what it's called now, a think tank type thing. It's not, that's not the right term. I'll come up with it in a minute, but they had four hundred and fifty four people put in ideas and question. They could keep coming back and offer suggestions and ideas and they did that all online and and it came, they were able to sort through and come up with four final areas that concerned people. And now they want to go out and do public meetings with the actual public. The problem is, we know with COVID, we can't do that. So we're not going to rush it. We're going to wait until we can go out and do meetings with the public present. And they will have storyboards, et cetera, and they will have a question under each of the headings. And they want to get local people's comments on how to help save rural schools. And so what they're asking, they'd like our municipalities to work with the school board. So it doesn't look like this is strictly a school board effort that we're trying to work together to save rural schools. And so what they've asked is that in each of the three counties, Middlesex, Oxford and Elgin, that they're going to plan to host three different public meetings in three areas in the county. And obviously in Elgin, it makes sense to have one in the east, one in the west and one in the center. And I have Mayor Mennel is checking out Springfield Community Hall and Mayor McPhail is checking out the West Elgin with their councils without West Elgin Community Center. And I would like us, I am assuming Central Ogden should host the one in the middle. And it could either be at Belmont or Port Stanley, but what they're hoping is that we would be willing to host those in one of our public rooms in one of our arenas as a free service to help support rural schools. So that's what I'm asking you now. If you'd be willing, it may not happen for another year with the rate we're going with COVID. But I want to know what your thoughts are. And so with it. Anyway, we can, we can, I can bring this back to the group. Each of the people from the different counties were asked to do this, each of the representatives. So I'm asking for Central Ogden's input. Councillor Wynn?
Um, it's about fine. I think it's a great idea that this is happening and I think with the issues that we ourselves have had in the past, we should most definitely host this.
Thank you. Councillor Fair, you wanted to speak?
Yes, I I would say anything that we can do with input to support rural schools is something we should participate in and very strongly and support it.
Any other comments, councillor Kravitz?
The agreement we had with Port Stanley, the school board, I think it'd be advantage if we could use utilize the new serum school, seeing that it was it is now remaining open. I think that would be a good spot to have the forum rather than a municipal building.
The reason they don't want it in, well, I mean, it can be, but they would prefer it in a municipal one to make it look so that the public realize the municipality and the school board are working together and that we're both supporting it. It isn't just a school board initiative. That's why they were asking it be in a community center. Deputy Mayor Marks and then councillor Row.
I full support for the idea. I I did like councillor Kravitz's suggestion, but rather than one of our arenas, simply because if you go to either one, you're certainly at the extreme of the municipality, one end or the other. I'm wondering someplace like renting the Masonic Hall would attract more of the public. And that's really what you want, isn't it?
Certainly want, yeah, parents and people with schools and and the public, definitely.
Certainly that'd be in the middle.
Okay, councillor Row?
I was just gonna say, we have a year to decide perhaps or less where it might be, but I would just be generally supportive of the idea.
Yes, and if we rented the the Masonic Hall, Deputy Mayor Marks, I'm assuming we as are you suggesting then that we as a municipality would pay that rent?
You know, I don't think it would break the bank and certainly they're pretty good people. I I I would think we'd get a pretty good rate.
Thank you. I I agree, it would be a little more central, but it is still very much in the south. And I thank goodness we're getting a school in Belmont at least, but we've lost one already and I'm certain New Serum is the one that is probably the most threatened with the East St. Thomas School, if that goes through. So I I agree with councillor Kravitz that it might have been a nice location. It's just they really want it to look like we're working together. So so the motion then, if we could make a motion tonight, it could just be to support the idea and that location and all that could be determined later, but that we as Central Ogden would support it. Councillor Wynn? You had a motion before or no? Okay, Diane is recording a motion. That we as a council support the initiative and and would provide a place for it to occur with no charge to the school board. I think is that basically what you were going to say, councillor Wynn? Thank you. I've been gone through the loss of my school. I have a hard time with this one. I have one other item that we'll deal with once we get this one done. Does anyone else have a new business item they want to bring up? Just so I know, once we're done with these. Seeing none, okay. I'll let Diane read the motion before I get a second or councillor Wynn wanted to move.
Just on a side note, councillor Pharaoh's wondering if the Eastwood Community Center would be built before then?
The rate COVID's going, who knows, Bill?
With Madam Mayor.
Yes. We need a second for the motion, councillor Row. When you put the the fade on the background or your blur at the background, your hand goes blurry too, councillor Row.
I know. I'll use this one instead.
Okay.
Read what I drafted, Mayor Martin?
Yes, Diane's going to read her draft motion.
Moved by councillor Wynn, second by councillor Row, that council supports in principle the rural school initiative of hosting a joint meeting, a joint public meeting in the near future. Yes, I put closely related. And further that the location and cost for a venue be determined at a later date. Is that sufficient?
I I but I think, weren't we saying that Central Ogden will cover the cost? Okay, because that that almost implies that we're going to charge. Is that my understanding or not? Is that the rest of you, your understanding? The reciprocal agreement should be coming through soon for the free use of back and forth.
For council sports in principle, the rural school initiative of jointly hosting a public meeting in the near future and further that the location of a venue be determined at a later date and that the venue cost be covered by the municipality of Central Ogden.
Okay. Everyone okay with that is the motion then? Go ahead and call the vote.
Councillor Cook? Councillor Kravitz?
Yes.
Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Wynn?
Yes.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. The other item I had, we have agreed and staff have been working with wildflowers and we've agreed to let them continue having their markets, their vegetable market they were having last year. Because we had agreed to let them go the whole season and and staff have basically said that there it's okay for them to do it as long as it's all within or on the property. One of the issues last year was the the parking, the very first night they had it, they filled Fruit Ridge line and blocked it quite substantially with cars and people walking up and down. And they even went out as far as and onto Sunset Road. And that was a bit of a dangerous situation. So they were asked then to make sure that the cars weren't parked out on the road. And I think some of the events since after that were much better. The only one that was a real problem then was the Christmas market they had, because that not only went all the way down Fruit Ridge, it also people were parking in the Masonic parking lot and walking across Highway Sunset Road, which is a an issue. So Brian Lima, the county engineer, also agrees that it'd probably be wise to have no parking on that on Fruit Ridge to encourage them to make sure everybody parks in the property while attending these things so that there is no safety issue. And we have a, we as a council can recommend this, and if we do, then Mr. Lima will act on it and recommend it to county council. If you don't want it done, it just, it the only reason I'm bringing it up is I it is a safety issue that some of our staff and myself have quite concerned with. What are your thoughts? Councillor Fair and then Deputy Mayor Marks.
Well, I I think when we approved this, we did say conditions, you know, that it wouldn't affect the neighborhood a lot. And I I think when you when you talk about a safety factor like that, especially walking across Sunset over Fruit Ridge, that's that's dangerous, completely dangerous. So I think I think that they should run their market so it doesn't impact on the travel on that road.
That staff have directed them to do that. This was just an added precaution. Deputy Mayor Marks, you wanted to speak?
This is the first I've heard of this. I I I would prefer before rather make a decision tonight to give it some thought. You know, you mentioned like people walking from the Masonic down there. There's not very many of them doing that, especially in in December. But I didn't really hear a lot of complaints. And you know, you you take the COVID. I know a couple, the first one and people are so pent up and frustrated looking for something to do. They've had a lot of successes down there. I I'd like to put some thought to this. Putting no parking up, that's pretty permanent. I'm not so sure I'm ready for that yet.
Mr. Perrin, I just would ask you, you you mentioned to me about the, do you have any idea the numbers that parked in the Masonic area and lot?
Yeah, I I can only call a point in time, but there was probably a couple dozen cars in the Masonic Hall and they were lined up, parked along Fruit Ridge line from the the site all the way to Sunset. I believe maybe councillor Kravitz and councillor Wynn are aware of the the parking there because they made it they made me aware on at least one occasion.
Thank you. And councillor Kravitz, you had your hand up and then councillor Wynn.
Yeah, I I just wanted to echo the the I was having a couple of times at the Wildflower Flowers Market and I was really impressed with the venue that they did have set up. They were adhering to the COVID rules. They they did their best to, you know, make things run as smoothly as possible. But yes, the issue of the vehicles on the road is definitely an issue and they were lined up all the way back to Sunset. It's a safety concern too. There's deep ditches on both sides of that road. And so if the vehicles are lined up, a fire truck or an ambulance would not have access to to get down there. So I think we need to support the no parking in that area and just make that a condition for the wildflowers market that they have to realize that people can't park them. They have to stay within their boundaries. So I I would support the no parking at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wynn.
Okay, yes, I had had witnessed the poking on on Fruit Ridge and it was quite something. I unfortunately have not been to the property yet though, but have spoken to many people who really enjoyed it. My only concern with the no parking and not that I'm against it. I guess my only concern would be for the neighboring properties that were not impacting them by making no parking. Again, I know they're being impacted by by the cars there, but by just making it no parking, I don't want to further upset those neighbors by doing that. So if that was an issue that at least those neighbors are aware beforehand and not finding out about it when the no parking signs go up. That's my only concern.
Now, Mr. Lima did suggest that it could be seasonal or it could be certain times, et cetera, that it wouldn't have to be all the time no parking. Or we can just do it straight, no parking, or we don't have to do anything. I just thought I'd bring it up for safety reasons. Councillor Wynn?
Just follow up. Yeah, I'm I'm not suggesting that it would be a problem, but so sometimes we pass in order to try and solve one that kind of impacts the people in it in the area in another way. So I just guess so that that's not what's happening. Those neighbors were sort of impacted anyways by the parking. Want to ensure we're not further impacting them by restricting them in some way as well. So that's my, that was my only point to that. Something does definitely need to be done about it, so.
Yes, and I I do know that wildflowers have done a very good job and it is an excellent market and we're not criticizing them in any way. This is just a safety issue at the moment. Councillor, you wanted to speak and then Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yeah, I guess I have mixed feelings about this, whether, you know, how critical it is at this point in time. But maybe a possible solution is just to encourage and whether that's by official signs or not. But no parking be between a certain point on Fruit Ridge east to the intersection of Fruit Ridge and Sunset. So it doesn't negate being able to use it in other places, but it just discourages it close to that intersection that would then discourage others from perhaps going further east across Sunset and to use the Masonic Hall. Because like some of the others, I saw at least a dozen or more people crossing the road at different times while I was there. So I would hate to see anything happen to them.
Deputy Mayor Marks, you wanted to speak?
Like I said, I I'm hesitant to make any decision. You know, we've brought this up under new business. We have not had an opportunity to have a staff report. We haven't had a planning report and we really haven't even had given wildflowers a chance to to respond. And if we go ahead and and request a parking ban on that road, you know, that may really throw the screws into their operation. I I think I would, like I said, this is the first I've heard of this and I'd like to reflect on it a bit.
That's certainly fine. You know, I just brought it up just because I know it is a safety issue and and you know, I I do know that Mr. Perrin has already directed wildflowers that they need to run the whole event on their own property. That that's that's important, because we did have some issues last year. But it's certainly a great event and a lot of people really enjoy it and look forward to it. So I I don't want to discourage the event either. We just want to make sure that people are safe. So would you like Mr. Perrin to bring back a report on? Then or yes, Mr. Shipway, sorry.
See you, Madam Mayor. I it's it's a county road, so ultimately it would be a county decision. I think one thing I'd just like to clarify is that the municipality had a pre consultation meeting with the subject property owners and based on the information presented, the use of the property is permitted at this time, as long as it's contained in the property. So there would not be an additional staff report or anything to that effect on it. The question I, if I may, is just, does council want to request the county to consider implementing no parking on Fruit Ridge? That's that's really the only question and there there wouldn't really be another reporter follow up item from That's that's really the only question and there there wouldn't really be another reporter follow-up item from staff unless. Unless council specifically requested something, but ultimately the decision to put up or not put up a no parking area is the county's decision.
Yes, and and Mr. Lima said that he would recommend it if Central Augen Council chose to recommend it. So what are your wishes tonight? Want to think about it? Clearly, staff aren't going to be bringing us back a report because it's not their. What are your thoughts? Think about it for another till the next meeting or not, or turn it down, just not act on it at all, or?
Let's just let me suggest that we just defer to the next meeting. It's not like it's the busy season yet. Still lockdowns on for another three, four weeks, so it's not gonna make a difference at this point, so let's put this off until next week, please.
Okay, so we will. Bring it back up on the 10th and then you can decide for certain how you wish to go. Thank you. Anyone else have any other new business? Seeing none, I need to, would you read the motion to move into closed? I'm sorry, Mr. Shipway.
Madam Mayor, not new business, but Mr. Brooks would just like to close the loop on a previous direction of council. A resolution of council, sorry, the Port Stanley temporary traffic signals. That the request went to the county. Mr. Brooks can close the loop on that for you.
Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you for you, Mayor Martin. So in response to the central organ request. To the county to make the. Temporary traffic signals permanent at Warren and Sunset and Warren and Carlo. The county have sent central organ staff correspondents seeking direction from council in regards to. The following items. The first one is would central organ fund the additional cost of installing the temporary. Traffic signals in the amount of $64,000. So that would be to continue on. With the traffic signals for another two years. There's a capital cost there. And two, would central organ fund the ongoing rental fees for the lights in the amount of $2,000 per month? For the 24-month trial period, which the county would entertain keeping those lights on site. For for, like I said, a two two-year pilot project, at which time they would evaluate whether or not the. The traffic signals are warranted. At this time, it's the county's belief that the traffic signals are not warranted. And therefore they're seeking direction on whether or not council of central organ wishes to pay costs.
Counselor Row.
I think that we should absolutely support maintaining those traffic lights. Given the fact that we have 14 town ho homes that are planned to go in along Warren Street as well as. There's a development just north of the golf club that is being heavily advertised by the golf club. I'm sure nothing has happened just yet, whether it will even be up within the two-year timeframe. For this trial, but without that stoplight there and all of those new cars coming out of both of those developments. I don't see how the traffic would flow properly.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
Engineer Brian Lima, I pressed him at how long these temporary lights would last. And I brought the example out here on Dalewood Road. I crossed a temporary bridge. Most of my adult life for over 40 years. He indicated that those lights, temporary lights. Would do the job for at least 10 years. My recollection that we. Mayor Bob Purcell actually made a motion that we could just leave it as is for two, two years. And two years and then reevaluate. So I would. Certainly with with the the news tonight, as Counselor Rose indicated, and and the one out from Southwood coming in. If we if we push the county to leave things as they are for 24 months, then reevaluate. We'll know how. Once the bridge is up and how traffic flows, et cetera. My guess is that the the county would support leaving it status quo for 24 months. Then come back with the same question, we'll decide. And that would be my response to them.
Counselor Crevitz.
I believe there's been traffic studies that have been done and in those traffic studies, the stoplights at the corner of Main and Bridge. Are sufficient to do enough traffic interruption to allow traffic to flow without those lights being in place. I would be opposed to those lights. I don't think they're necessary once the bridge is reestablished. If anything, I believe the satellite proposal by the traffic study was to have the lights at the corner of Bridge and Ward. Is in the future, not in the two locations that they're currently at. So I would, I I'd really like. I would I'd have a hard time supporting this at this point.
Counselor Fair.
I would also agree with Counselor Crevitz. The traffic studies that we've had done for all of the other development. Farther towards the beach have all been done before these lights were even in place. So so they were they were done and they said that the traffic flows seemed to be adequately managed before the lights were there. And another thing, I don't know if if Mr. Brooks. If we say leave it for two years, I think I thought you were saying that would cost 60 some thousand plus $24,000 a year. For rent of the of it. Is that not correct?
That's correct. $64,000 in capital cost to have those lights remain. And I believe it was $2,000 per month to keep those in place, the rental fees. Because those lights weren't purchased, they're rented. So it it could cost the municipality of Central Augen upwards of $100,000.
So I was just wondering how much more it is to put in a full installed light once you're got a hundred thousand dollars on it.
Mr. Lima quoted us at over 600,000 for permanent lights. Counselor Wynn, I'm sorry, Mr. Perrin, if you want to speak first, then I'll get to Counselor Wynn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a a point of clarification with respect to the two developments that were referenced, the the one at 377 Warren Street. And then the other one at the north of the Kettle Creek Golf and Country Club. The the development at 377 Warren Street, there was a traffic impact statement or study done. Lights are not required as a result of the the development at that development. And that was taken into account, the background traffic that was identified. Is as part of the overall Port Stanley traffic of study that was done in in 2018. And those background counts were done on the August long weekend. It was, for lack of a better term, the perfect storm. It was 32 degrees, sunny. There was lots of traffic going to and from the beach, so it was the worst case scenario. So the the traffic impact study that was done for that development, 377 Warren Street. As well as the one for the Kettle Creek Golf and Country Club subdivision. That's been directed, we actually met with the traffic engineers last week, Mr. Lima, myself and planning staff. And the developers engineer to look at the impacts of that development. All indications right now are that the major traffic flows are a result of the what we call peak peak. So the high summer season with with tourists on, you know, a 32-degree weekend. So those developments are not going to. Be the, you know, the the tipping point to cause. The need to signalize those two intersections. And to Counselor Crevitz's point, the traffic study that was commissioned by the municipality, looking at full buildout of Kokomo. As well as the Harborlands, the one traffic signalized intersection that was recommended. Within the 2040 timing period, depending on buildout of those Harborlands and Kokomo. Was at the Bridge and Carlo Road intersection.
I will say, when I was mentioning, speaking to this a bit at the county, I think the Warren and Sunset one, I can very much see. Because it's very difficult on a busy weekend or at all to turn left onto Sunset off of Warren. That that's the difficult one because you have to cross a line of traffic. And so that one is to me quite difficult. The other one won't have as much traffic. But Mr. Lima did say that once the full like Kokomo was fully developed and those things were that. They'd be reevaluating these sites in future for lights and he figured it may well be that we need lights in the future. But he does not see it at this time. Counselor Row and then Counselor Wynn and then Deputy Mayor Marks.
And question, so who would pay for the lights in the future if they are then deemed to be necessary?
The county.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Through you, Madam Mayor, if I may. I think that's a an important component. These are county roads and the county is ultimately responsible for those. And although the lower tier central organ may consider, I think respectfully, it would be staff's recommendation. That the the county should fund county infrastructure on county roads. Central organ has a significant amount of infrastructure all over the entire municipality that requires funding. And and it would seem that the county can monitor its its traffic and it's doing a transportation master plan right now. And and it would be our respectful recommendation that the county should fund county infrastructure on county roads.
Counselor Wynn, and then I'm sorry, Counselor Row, you wanted to respond again?
May I ask, was there any discussion about when the lights would be? If the lights are going to be taken down post the bridge being operative again, when would those lights be coming down? Because I think there it would be just good to have a a trial session somehow, just to make sure that old habits. Change if that's what the expectation is.
I'll let Deputy Mayor Marks speak to that.
That that was my whole point. In my opinion, county council felt very generous. The bridge is coming, cross your fingers, under budget. And and there's an appreciation on county council that central organ, Port Stanley is the jewel of the county. Everyone's proud of it. They realized that the traffic, the suggestion was that for up to two years, we wouldn't be paying for it. The county would just status quo. Then we'd ask the question, will you pay for it? And if if they don't, we can decide to pay for it ourselves or not. But I think there's an opportunity for us to continue on for 24 months, see if the patterns are set or not. I think Mayor Martin and myself would have to do some lobbying, but I think there's an excellent chance that the the county would do it.
I I think we need to have staff maybe follow up with that because that's certainly not what Mr. Brooks has been told by Mr. Lima. So I I had thought that they they weren't going to take them down for a couple of months after the bridge opened. Just to see what was happening, but maybe I'm maybe I'm mixing that up. That's why I'm not sure, but.
But the decision would be a political decision.
Yes. Any other comments? So we're not prepared, though, at this point to recommend that we tell them they should and we would pay for it. Okay, Counselor Row.
Just my closing comment, I would be disappointed if we have chaos in the summertime with everybody being excited. About being able to go anywhere for at least the next three or four months. So if anything, I would love to see them stay until after this summer season, if nothing else.
That would be certainly something we could bring up to County Council, but. Counselor Crevitz. Can't hear you, Dennis, you're muted.
I'd like to actually contradict what Counselor Rose said. I apologize, but I think it would be an issue with more traffic coming towards Stanley. The lineup on Warren Street, if you ever were trying to come from the school toward St. Thomas, you'd be stuck in that lineup forever if traffic ever increased. Having COVID this summer and we were fortunate that COVID. The bridge and COVID coincided, that was that was the only lucky thing out of COVID. If if we can say there's a lucky thing out of COVID. But I think there's enough traffic flow and interruption at the lights in Port Stanley right now. That allows traffic to flow out of that area. People aren't going to be using the Warren Street as much once the bridge is completed. So I think it would be an error to have those lights remain.
Deputy Mayor Marks.
I think our engineer Brian Lima has done an excellent job adapting to different changes over the last year and a half in Port Stanley. He's done actually a super job in my opinion. I don't think, bear in mind that the Meeks Bridge just north of. The street, just the bridge up, that is going to be under construction. So a lot of people like to scoot out that way and that's going to be one less way out of town. I I think there's an opportunity here that we we've got nothing to lose. If they say they'll fund it for 24 months, why not go for it? And then the proof will be in the pudding. And if we, as you find out, say. Yeah, we don't need that. Turn one off. Brian Lima will adapt to those things.
Counselor Wynn.
So I think we take the cost of the traffic study that we've just totally discounted and add back to the cost. Of keeping those lights on and we've just increased it by that because there was no point in having the traffic study. And then going against it.
I certainly agree that we shouldn't be paying.
Earlier, when I had my hand up, like much, much earlier, was that I was in agreement with Counselor Fair and Counselor Crevitz. And what they were saying that I I think once the bridge is operational, that those lights aren't going to be required. And I totally agree with what Counselor Crevitz said with regard to Warren Street as well. That with with the traffic, you would get stuck on there. It would be havoc trying to get out of it. Once the bridge is open, that's going to open up that flow of traffic. People are going to be going Bridge Street. Not everybody's using Warren Street anymore.
Counselor Row.
So this is my actually last, my last closing comment, but I am the only one on this council that lives on the west side of that bridge. So I experience the traffic there every single day that I am out. So I am willing to do whatever the majority says and I'm willing to see what happens. But just beware, if something goes awry, it's going to be the traffic at those intersections.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Marks.
I certainly agree with Counselor Row. What's the downside of trying this? Like I said, it's it's a. If we get in six weeks and and it is the problem with backup and so we adapt to it. You know, we we send a motion, say tear them down, but once we tear them down, they won't put them back up. It's a gift and I think we they can leave them there until we don't need. Them or prove we don't need them. Like we're all guessing right now.
Counselor Wynn.
Say that's a gift you don't pay for.
We're not paying for it. It would be conditional. We'd ask them to leave it as is. We won't pay for it. I I wouldn't support us paying for it. Pardon?
Did we not ask that already that they leave them?
It'll be a it'll be a county decision by the politicians, whether they'll let us leave it without paying for it or not. My, I think there's a pretty good chance that they'll do it. Mayor Purcell made that motion on last Tuesday and then it was deferred to see what we wanted.
Mr. Brooks, you wish to speak?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Martin. Just to just to clarify, the county engineer was looking for. Whether or not central organ was interested in funding the lights for a a period of 24 months rather than keeping them. In in service. Central organ's already expressed its interest to keep them in service. He really is looking for direction on whether or not count central organs willing to pay.
I think my the the what I'm hearing from everyone basically is no, we're not willing to pay. And some think they're not necessary and others think it would be a good thing to run the trial for the two years to see. Or even a few months after the bridge. I would think even two months, three months after the bridge is opened again. Through the middle of the summer, that probably would be a good test. Well, Deputy Mayor Marks, I'm assuming you and I know basically what's being said. Do we need a motion or should we just report this to? The county.
Well, if we went back to the county and asked for political support that it stays. for the, for the season and we get that, and then we can make a further decision how much longer we want. Maybe that's as far, as much as we need right now.
Okay. Is that all right with everyone? Without paying that we asked them, they leave it through the season, the summer season? Okay. Thank you. And sorry, I missed that on the new business. It's right on my sheet and I, I didn't see it. Now we need a motion to move into closed.
Motion reached, Madam Mayor. Moved by Councillor Rose, seconded by Councillor Fair. The council proceeding to closed session at 9:20 PM in order to address a matter pertaining to closed session minutes, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege and a position, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
Thank you. Call of the vote?
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Crevitz? Councillor Fair?
Yes.
Councillor, Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Wynn? Councillor Row?
Yeah.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries.
Okay, we'll give Ollie a chance to take us off live or whoever's taking us up live.